There we go. Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatap County Board of County Commissioners to order. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, all three commissioners are present.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the commissioners' meeting minutes for November 22nd, 2022, and November 29th, 2022, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, we are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual, as always. The commissioners will respond to any comments after everyone has had a chance to say their piece. We will begin, as always, in the room. Nope. Okay, we're going online. If you have any public comment, please raise your hand. Star six to unmute yourself on your phone or turn your video camera on. We'd be happy to hear from you. 7211.
This is Greg Wagner with CEES. You have before you today in the consent agenda a request from the Board of Equalization to allow you, the legislative authority, to process and hear assessment appeals. I'd like to know if you three commissioners have had the required training for RCW 8448.042. If you have not had the proper training to process and hear appeals, then you cannot pass the consent agenda today with number one in it. And on December 6th, commissioners' meeting, you held an executive session per RCW 423110. You allowed outside counsel, Mr. Stephen DeGiulio, to attend that meeting. I'd like to know where in the RCW for executive sessions that it says you can allow that man to attend. If you cannot provide that information, then you violated the law. Why is it that the solid waste contractor contract at which you were discussing during that executive session was not held in an open public meeting? It is a contract that affects the citizens of the county and should not have been discussed behind closed doors. Were any amendments made to the solid waste contract during this executive session? I'd like for you to answer me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Excuse me. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Ms. Basque.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I agree with Greg Wagner that number one needs to be taken off the consent agenda before approving today until we can verify that all three of you county commissioners have had the proper training to hear the, to take over appeals for the Board of Equalization. So until that can be cleared up further, I would just suggest that get taken off and not just pass through because it sounds like you have a lot of people in your county upset with the new raised assessed property values. And unless you have the training, you should not be hearing that. It should be left up to the people who have the training to do so. Also, I would like to ask all three of you commissioners, well, Commissioner Soder, Commissioner Anderson, sorry, Commissioner Christopher, you have recused yourself from any doing, any talking of Carringer project. So Commissioner Soder, Commissioner Anderson, have either one of you seen the pre-submission proposal for the Carringer solar project to be cited off Knight Road? That's a very straightforward question. I just want to know, have you seen that document? As you know, we have seen that document. So that's how we get the information about this project because public records requests expose that document. So my question to you two commissioners is, have you seen, looked at, read, perused, had in your hand, had it set before you, had it emailed to you in any form? Have you seen this document? And if you have, I'd like you to answer truthfully. And if you have, maybe you can tell the citizens what you think about this proposed Carringer project and the size of it, 1,083 acres, two acres of lithium ion battery storage. So that's my question for you. I hope that you'll answer it if you've seen that document. Thank you. And oh yeah, please take your, take number one off till we can make sure you guys are properly trained to be carrying these, these Board of Equalization appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basque. Is there anyone in the room who would like to provide public comment? Okay, back online. Gabrielle Gilbert.
Yes, hi, thank you. So I just want to follow up on the research that was done on McKenzie County in North Dakota concerning daycare that they were able to actually start in 2014 and now they're in a 2022 budget that they've put millions of dollars aside for this second daycare that they're building. They're using, I believe they're also accessing USDA grants as well as other grant dollars and that they have a collaboration that city, county, school. And so I just wanted to see where you were in your fact finding. The other thing I want to express is what was spoken last week, one of the commissioners brought up not addressing public comment, commentary, not having the commissioners speak to that. I'm going to be really clear that any kind of barrier that is put up when it comes to public comment and when it comes to citizens speaking to elected officials on government, that those barriers not be played with. I honestly feel that there has been so much negative attention about public comment in Clickatap County that it is giving you license to literally make these, you know, pop up these ideas of, we're not going to comment on this, let's, let's, let's play something in front that we're not going to comment at the end of commentary, we're not going to have discussions with citizens. That is not okay. And I, I really feel that public forum is an important forum for the discussion of government between elected officials and the constituency. And when you toy with this because you're picking up toys to leave because you're angry about something is not okay. And I want these attacks on public commentary to stop and I want barriers to be dropped and not placed up. I don't want to play cat and mouse games with information. If I ask a straightforward question concerning something that's going on in the county, I just want a straightforward answer. So I, you know, I asked the information last week to confirm 40 children in the county from county workers requiring care. And now I'm like, I think that it's important for commissioners to understand that maybe people don't have access to email you, maybe they don't have the phone to call you, maybe they're just asking you when they're in front of you and they're just asking a simple clarification and that shouldn't be an issue. And that's what I want to express. Stop attacking public commentary. If anything, walk into 2023 preserving it and keeping it an ongoing conversation between constituents and elected officials. And again, childcare is infrastructure, this is about economic build. If it's happening beautifully in North Dakota, then please let it happen here. And the only way that it can happen here is that you start caring about it enough that you do something about it. And that's what's important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. We have people to admit still. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Raise your hand. Star six to unmute yourself, turn your video camera on or come forward. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Sure we're all looking at this? Looking at the same thing? No. Oh.
I can take a shot at it from memory as far as the thing I'm looking at.
Last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? I am not seeing any. Is there anyone who would, any of my seatmates who would like to respond to anything that was said?
I might at the end of public comment period, I'll have to wait.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a stab at a couple of these. First, Mr. Wagner, as far as the, and also Ms. Basque, as far as the item number one on the consent agenda, which is just for folks that are online that maybe aren't aware of what that is, it's, I'll read it. As far as item number one is a request from, and again, I'm emphasizing, from the Clickatap County Board of Equalization to the county legislative authority to process and hear timely filed appeals for the current assessment year 2022 beyond the 28-day regularly convened meeting. And it does reference to RCW 8448010 and the WAC. Require the county board of equalization to request a county legislature approval to convene at any time when petitions filed exceeding 25% or 10% of the number of appeals filed in the preceding year, whichever is greater. So there appears from the comments that were made, they're giving the impression that this would, in fact, that the Board of Commissioners would be hearing these appeals. It is not true. No, we have not had the training to hear those appeals. In fact, we're, we have no role in hearing those appeals. The Board of Equalization hears those appeals and they do have to have the training and they go through all that. So we, so what this simply is, is without this authorization, they cannot, they, meaning the Board of Equalization, cannot hear appeals outside of that 28-day period, which is just not practical, given the number of appeals, which is not unprecedented. This is a, this is a fairly common number of appeals that we're seeing. So it's not the Board of Commissioners. So your references to training that's in RCW 8448010 is not relevant to the Board of Commissioners. So that is, that is, you are mistaken. And so I will, just for the record, be voting yes on the request from the Board of Equalization to, to have extra time to hear these appeals. Outside counsel in the executive session last week, outside counsel, yes, we cannot have, we cannot have an executive session with just any outside counsel. They have to be a duly authorized deputy prosecutor, so they're actually not outside counsel. So Steve DeGiulio, who has done much work for Clickatap County over 25, 30 years, actually helped draft the host fee agreement between then Rabanco and Clickatap County. We have before the board, there is some discussion going, the possibility of some amendments, which again are not unprecedented. This would be the sixth amendment to the host fee account. At the board's request to the prosecuting attorney, we asked to have Mr. DeGiulio deputized as a county deputy prosecutor with full support from the prosecutor, which he would have to. And so he did participate along with the prosecuting attorney in a very appropriate executive session to discuss potential amendments to that host fee agreement. And there are specific exemptions for not having that in executive session because the public's interest could be harmed by having the discussion out in the public. If we're talking about amending a contract with somebody, we're not going to tell, we're not going to show them our cards in a public session, meaning for the amendment. So that was totally appropriate. And as far as the other piece, as far as amending, of course not, no action can be taken in an executive session. That is by law. And so any potential amendment that would happen to landfill host fee contract or frankly any contract cannot be done in executive session. It must be done in an open public meeting in the full light of day. And so that I can categorically deny. There were no decisions made, there was nothing. This was just getting some advice from a very knowledgeable counsel that had helped and has helped with basically all the other amendments as well. And I'm going to defer the rest and I can come back and, as far as for Gabrielle at the end, if the chair allows. Go ahead now. Okay. Gabrielle, thank you for keeping this topic alive. I appreciate the, the work too, as far as the stuff going on in McKenzie County back in, in North Dakota. And we are continuing to look and getting details on that stuff. We, meaning me. And I, and I will share those with you and my seatmates before I exit the door at the end of the month. As to your, your other comments about public access as far as public comment, I, I agree with you as far as that I think it is necessary. And I don't really think that there is any attempt on the part of the board to limit access to the board to have those conversations. And I will say, you and I have had detailed, passionate discussions about topics over the year. I have always found you to be, you know, you're interested in having a conversation and exchanging ideas and learning and also giving information to help so that I can make better decisions. That's what that's all about. And I believe that the vast, vast, vast majority of the public, that is the, that is their whole point for wanting to have an interaction with our elected officials. Unfortunately, we have some folks that they're not interested in that. They are interested in public spectacle and they are interested in, you know, trying to make people look bad or for whatever reason. And that's their right. They can do that. That is our process. And unfortunately, or fortunately, that is the price of democracy and it is the price of free speech and we have, that, that's just the price we pay. And as frustrated as it can be sometimes to try to find a productive way to have a conversation with some of these folks, we have to keep doing it even when it's, they're really not, they don't appear to be interested in actually getting any information or changing their mind or learning something or imparting information. But that's, that's the system we have. And I, I agree with you, Ms. Gilbert, that that needs to continue in some form or another so that folks feel like they can, they can have access to folks. And I, and I seriously doubt there's, there's anything that's going to happen that's going to change that.
I would, I would echo everything Commissioner Soder said with regards to the Board of Equalization. It's very clearly written in there that it is not trying to usurp the BOE's power to give it to the county commissioners. It is very plain in how it is written that that is not the case. With regards to outside counsel, outside counsel is brought in on projects that are complex, that are outside the realm of what staff may have. This is nothing new, this is nothing special. This has been happening since the beginning of time. And we are very fortunate that Mr. DeGiulio was willing and able to take on our project being that he has more knowledge and history than any person on this board because he was there when it was originally written. And of course, you never make decisions inside executive session, all decisions are made outside of executive session. So thank you, Mr. Wagner, for your concern and I hope that we've been able to clear that up for you. As with regards to Ms. Basque, the pre-submission proposal by Carringer, no, I have not seen that. And I purposely have not seen that because at some point I may be a decision maker with regards to that. Last I have heard, that no application has been filed. Pre-submission conferences happen regularly over many different projects, over many different reasons. Whenever you think you might want to do a project, you come in for that. Carringer, whoever their name may be, from week to week, they could file an application with Clickatap County, they could file an application with EFSEC, they could decide they don't want to work here or that it doesn't, it's not going to pencil. I don't, with how many things that we have to do on a weekly and monthly basis, I'm not going to speculate or spend my time worrying about just one pre-submission conference. On top of that, in order for us to be neutral and seem neutral, if we would like to rule on decisions, that's why we don't get highly involved when it's in the application stage because at some point we may be the quasi judicial decision maker with regards to these applications. So I hope that helps you understand why we don't always talk about it and we don't always talk about individual projects. With Ms., in terms of Ms. Gilbert, I haven't had a chance to review the video from last week and I was on a plane to DC, so I don't know what exactly was said with regards to citizen comment. I will say that citizen comment is an important time for us, all three commissioners, to hear from the citizens at the same time. With that said, much of what is said is a statement, it's not a back and forth, it's not meant to be a question. I can understand if there was some feelings of discontent from one side or the other because very often it just feels like you're being attacked rather than trying to be understood or you're trying to impart knowledge. With regards to next year, I give deference to the chair next year for how they would like to run the meetings, just like how my seatmates gave deference to me this year, how I would like to run the meetings. And I think our meetings were more civil than they were our first term in office because of the changes that were made. I would always say that I am always available for anyone to comment. I am always willing to meet, I'm always never more than a phone call away, my phone is always on. You don't have to just come to a commissioners' meeting just so you can be recorded and for posterity at any time. You can reach out to any three of us and we're always willing to have candid, concise, clear communication with regards to the issues at hand. And finally, I would say thank you yet again, Gabrielle, for bringing up the, and all of the emails with regards to rural childcare. There's a lot of different ways it's being done in the, in the US and until you sent that email, I had never even knew that McKenzie County, North Dakota existed. So thank you very much for your information and I'm going to continue looking into it just as my seatmate. With that, Commissioner Christopher.
I have nothing that you guys haven't already said, so I'm good.
Yes, please.
I have a follow-up because I didn't, I didn't purposely not answer Ms. Basque on the Carringer question. No, I have not seen, the only thing I, I do have some recollection of seeing and I, the, like a map or a, like a visual representation of the area, but I believe that was in response to Mr. Wagner's and Mr. and Ms. Basque's public records request for the, you know, what had been submitted. And so I, I think I was just copied on that. And I, again, I haven't read any of the documents. I did see, I believe I saw a map as far, so I'm, I'm familiar as far as I know the area, as far as the scale, size, all that stuff. No. For the same reason is that, you know, that, that issue could have, it won't now. Nothing's going to come before me as far as in the next two weeks. And so I guess I could go really just dig into that file if I wanted to now, but as a, as a rule, then no, the commissioners don't for anything that may end up potentially in front of them in a SEPA appeal. We try not to, not try, we don't, we don't gather information because it, you know, it's like the judge going out ahead of the trial, so.
And I will say, with regards to that project, I and I think my seatmates went to that open house that they hosted.
Yeah, I didn't, but I think, I think Dan did.
Commissioner Christopher and I went to the open house and I don't know if you would consider that their town hall or their public information gathering, but we attended that. So I want to be very clear that that was not part of the pre-submission application that I have seen. That is not the process. That was what they were hosting themselves, as I believe Ms. Basque and Mr. Wagner were there. You have nothing? Commissioner Christopher? All right. With that, it is 1:30 and we are going to close public comment for the day. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for our public comment. As always, we are going to move into our unfinished business, which is the public hearings that were continued, closed a further comment, adoption of the 2023 budget tax levies and 2023, 2028 CIP. I wasn't here. Did you guys close it to further public comment?
We left it open.
We left it open, to my knowledge.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I saw that in there.
Okay. I wasn't here, so I wanted to be.
Everything's open. It was written, no, yeah, it was closed to further oral testimony.
Okay, it was closed to further oral. Well, that's nice.
It was written comment.
Okay. All right. And we'll have an update from.
Well, same update as the last probably three times. I think this is our fourth time coming to a public hearing for this budget. Definitely being thorough with this one. It has been posted for ample amount of time. We ran another ad this last week to make sure everybody had enough time to review it and provide any written comment. I haven't received any. The board has not received any either. So before you, you have the adoption packet, which will, which covers the resolutions for the property tax levy for the general fund, the road fund, the 2023 budget and the total of $59,484,698, and adopting the 2023, 2028 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any questions of staff?
No, we've been over this and I feel very comfortable that I know what I'm doing.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to.
Okay, if we're ready to proceed.
I think first I need to close it to further written. With that, I will close the public hearing to further comment, written or oral, and we will move into discussion. Any discussion?
No, I, we've been over this a lot. We all are well versed on the budget and the, and the other matters before us, so I would just motion to move forward.
Okay. I mean, one thing I will say from my, you know, long tenure on the board, 16 years, I will say this is probably the most intentional budget development since I've been here. As far as I think the board and staff and departments and everybody have really put the effort into understanding the intricacies of the budget and are, really, I think the, the board is better, better informed to make a decision than I, at least I feel that way about myself in, in the last 16 years. So I am, I'm very comfortable moving forward. And if the chair is ready and my seatmates are ready, then I'm, I'm willing to propose a motion.
Please.
Ready? Okay. And just for folks listening, we have quite a pile of these because a budget is a, is a, it's not a single, or the budget is a single document. The enabling legislation is pretty complicated. So we are going to take these in the order that they're on the blue card, if the chair is okay with that, so I don't get lost. So first, before us, we have a resolution on the matter of establishing the 2023 tax levy for the general fund, election reserve fund, and the veterans relief fund. I am just so. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Okay, I'm going to do just the last. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body, the taxing districts, that an increase to the regular property tax levy is hereby authorized for a levy to be collected in the 2023 tax year. The dollar amount of increase over the actual levy amount from the previous year shall be $51,518.46, which represents a 1% increase from the previous year. Said actual levy amount shall be apportioned based on, and that's, it will be split between mental health and the fixed levies, veterans relief fund, the election reserve fund. So, and this, it should be noted that this increase is exclusive of additional revenue resulting from new construction improvements to properly, which could include newly constructed wind turbines, solar biomass, and geothermal facilities, and any increase in the value of state assessed property and any annexations that have occurred and refunds. And so I'm just saying that so that folks know that what the board is approving in the levy is that 1% cap on, which is about $51,000. The other is just what we levied last year, except for the, any new construction or new things that go on. So with that said, we have that resolution that is before us. My motion is to approve and adopt that said resolution.
I would second that very limited worded.
You're, I was getting worried for staff there.
Sorry. I'll be better on the next one.
Oh, there is a motion in a second to adopt the 2023 tax levy for the general fund, for the general fund, the reserve fund, and the veterans relief fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. Mr. Chair, next we have a resolution on the matter of establishing the 2023 tax levy for the road fund. It also is just the 1% and new construction. My motion is to approve the resolution and, and adopt it.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion in a second in the matter of establishing the 2023 road levy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution on the matter of adopting the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement plan. As submitted, my motion is to approve the resolution and adopt the capital improvement plan.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion in a second to adopt the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement plan that incorporates the adopted six-year road program and any amendments made through during 2023. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. And finally, we have before us a resolution on the matter of adoption of the budget for the year 2023 for Clickatuck County government for various funds in a total sum of $59,848,698. My motion is to approve the resolution and I'm going to defer, yes? Yes. What did, well, it doesn't matter what I said because that's, that is what's written here and I said something else, obviously. So let me restate, $59,484,698. My motion is to approve and adopt.
I would second the motion.
There is a resolution in the matter of the adoption of the budget for the 2023 year for the Clickatuck County government for the total of $59,484,698. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Yes, that's worthy. You did an amazing job, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Stand up a whole new fund, a whole new department and.
And you're going to have the next one done here in another couple of weeks, right?
We are going to start on it.
I know, that's the, yeah, 2024 starts, you're right, January 5th or something.
Good job. Next up, we have our findings and conclusions, terms and conditions in support of the board action on November 8th approving the model decommissioning plan for wind and solar. Mochi. Good afternoon.
Before you is a proposed ordinance to adopt the model decommissioning plan that will discuss on September 20th, 27th, October 25th, and November 8th.
Are there any questions from Mochi?
Nope. This, I would say what was the ordinance that, the draft ordinance accurately incorporates the changes that the board discussed and that would implement them.
I would entertain a motion if.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have before us an ordinance of Clickatuck County watching related to energy development and the provisions of a model decommissioning plan for wind and solar energy projects. My motion is to approve the ordinance as presented.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion in a second to approve the ordinance for the model decommissioning plan. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I would not, it's not really relevant, but it's, the question is, we did receive a, I did receive a written comment, which, again, it's after, so it's not, it's not germane to this, but it is, I think there is still some confusion out in the industry about that this model decommissioning plan is not retrospective or retroactive, it's prospective forward on any new projects, not previous projects. And that might be something I would, I would suggest to reach out, make sure folks know that the, the adopted, the ones that have been approved are, are the ones that are still in force for those folks.
Okay.
I did answer that email, by the way, and explained that to the, to the writer.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Christopher. I had not. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the adoption of the ordinance for the model decommissioning plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mochi, for your hard work on this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Who is going to be doing the finance committee?
Brenda said she was coming over, but do you want the agenda?
Yeah, let's just do the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with nine items, noting we are pulling number two for further review.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with nine items by pulling number two for further review. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Would you like to pay estimate, sir?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay estimate number 28 to Kirby-Niggle-How Construction Company in the final payment for the Clickatuck County Services Building Project contract number C03120 in the amount of $26,103.17. And I for one would be happy to say, I'm happy to see final.
Final. Yes. Second.
There is a.
I will second both the motion and the comment.
There is a motion in a second to pay, pay estimate number 28 to Kirby-Niggle-How Construction for the final payment for the Clickatuck County Services Building Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Ready for bills, please? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $309,256.75 in payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $795,744.39 for the date ending December 12th, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're running ahead of schedule.
Director McClure heads up that large contingency update. And if you would like, I will go contact someone from the finance steering committee to see if they're available.
Sure. I mean, we're 15 minutes ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm going to go that way, too.
You got to go, too?
Yeah.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to recess for five minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recess for five minutes.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of a five-minute recess signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will see everyone back at 1:50. Okay, it is 1:50 and we are back in session. And since nobody's here, we will do our regular board pending, which was an update on, you've been on since 2019.
Yeah, the finance steering committee was formed back, as far as for the steering, the financial system.
Right.
For the, what we were going to do with it. Sorry, since 2019, so. And I don't want to get ahead of, because Brenda will be here and I'm assuming the treasurer is going to come over and hopefully Gordy, because that's the current finance steering committee and three of the four members are leaving. And so we thought, given that, we should make a final report and make some recommendations. And so that's what the, this is. But actually, Mr. Chair, if we have the time while we're waiting for that, I would do under board pending an update. I did attend the meeting in Glenwood last Wednesday on the timber range. Was a good, good group of folks that were there. Timber County, timber folks had a good showing as well, and the sheriff and the undersheriff. I think generally, it was, it mirrored, I would say, the meeting we had where it was, it was positive and there's general support. There was a little pushback from a couple folks as far as the, the county's chair and why aren't we just, you know, basically paying for all of it? And I pushed back on that as well. What I heard from the timber companies especially, which pay the bulk of the assessment, is they were sort of meeting in real time right there and, you know, we were, they were kind of crunching some numbers and are, you know, willing to raise their assessments to cover the bulk of the increase to be able to add back in a second person so that, you know, at the one-third, two-thirds. What I heard from the, from the rancher folks is that, you know, Neil, Mr. Kaiser was, was clear as far as, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll do their part, they'll pay their part. But I did have requests from folks to kind of come back and continue, you know, is the, is the county, is that, you know, one-third, two-thirds, is that absolute? And would that be something that, that we would look at as far as that formula? Because I said, you know, one thing is the, the one-third, to me, the, the, the weight of it, meaning the precedent of it, is it is that, it's a precedent. That, that split has been going on for 20-some years and it obviously was acceptable to the parties originally in the original, that, you know, we pay two-thirds of the cost, the, the other folks pay the one-third and how they arrive and how they get their one-third is their business. But I said, I, you know, there's nothing written in stone that that is the formula. You know, maybe it should be 50/50, maybe it should be 40/60, maybe it should be a quarter, three-quarters, which of course they'd like that, but. So I will, so I would say at this point, I would expect something from definitely the, what I heard, I heard commitment basically from everyone that they will come up with the other, that not the other, but basically to fund one-third of the two-person.
How does that work? We just passed a budget.
We did, and it doesn't, and it would, it would have to be that, that second. And that's what I had asked the sheriff about, how much lead time would you need as far as if the board approved that in the future? Because that, that position, you know, they have a vacancy now and they would not, if I'm recalling, they, they generally, they don't become active until, you know, really about April. And so he was talking about, well, by March, he would need to start the hiring process and get somebody on board and, and something like that. So it's not something that has to be done immediately, that it could be handled potentially as far as, it wouldn't have to because the dollars, like you're always able to take more revenue in without a budget revision. It's just the expenditure side. So if the board was amenable to it and had the agreement for the revenue piece of it, you, but at some point before that, those line items ran out of dollars, you would have to have a supplemental budget to put the additional revenue in for the expenditure. So it's somewhere a point, you know, halfway through the year because that line item would, they wouldn't be able to process the payroll.
I guess what I would like to see is the revenue received before we finalize the budget for the, the future year. So essentially, if they want to pay now to get a second deputy in 2023, they're essentially paying again in 2023 in September to pay for. they're essentially paying again in 2023 in September to pay for 2024's person. I don't want to be chasing my tail every year.
Right. I think though, and this would be a good, this would be a good discussion to have with Jen and Karen. Because I think the way it has worked, like they have not, that they normally, they get an assessment after the, after the season, not before. Because that was one of the discussions was, it was like, well, how late? You know, how, because we, because one of the things that they get billed, because I had raised the issue is there's a difference between budget and actual. So what do we do if the budget is this number of dollars and you're committed to one-third of those? And then the actual either comes in lower or higher, what does that mean? And in the case of if it came in lower by the end of the year, what, now we've collected this money that we can't, what do we do with it? And, you know, do we carry it over? Is it like fun bound? What, what do we do with that? And so the, that's when I think, and I may be misspeaking, but I believe now they don't actually bill for the service until basically the end of the season, like the heavy season. So.
So theoretically, if they came up with something now, it would be to cover last year. They're not offering to cover last year. They're offering to, if we reinstitute the program, they promised to pay us the money in the fall.
Right. They would sign the agreement for the assessment of the dollars to cover, you know, which it is going to be like $45,000 or $46,000. So there would be a new agreement made. And then it was pretty, pretty, I think everybody acknowledged that that needs to be, that agreement needs to be updated every year with the new number so that it's not, you don't get the sticker shock of going from $15,000 to $45,000 or $46,000.
So I've got.
Maybe the agreement can be signed in the budget year.
That would be the best, really.
Then would lock it down for the next, next year.
So I guess I have an, I have an issue here. I'm looking at the, the budget that we just, for the range deputy program for one individual, it's $117,115.
No, that's actually, that was in, that was the original and that was for the two positions. So Jen printed me off new stuff. So we did have the.
Okay.
So there is, so yeah, because I, I want to make sure I actually had the right number, because I was under the same assumption. And that was in the preliminary and that was for the program and that was for two.
Okay.
So the, the most current numbers from what's in the budget, if you took, because it's, one deputy doesn't cost half as much as two. There is some economy of scale, I guess, if you add a second one. I'm, I'm not sure why exactly, but there is.
How that works.
Yeah, how that works, that two is not one times two. It's almost, but not quite. Because it's, yeah, you get two for.
So I guess the question is, is where does the rest of that money come from? Does that come from within the sheriff's budget or does that come from a departmental?
That would be a discussion.
Budgeted.
Right. It's not budgeted and that would be a discussion for the, between the board and the sheriff. But I, you know, I'm here to report back on the discussion with the, the industry folks, timber and ranchers, is they'll, they'll come up with the, they're willing to pay one-third of the cost of the two. Somewhere around $45,000, $46,000.
That's kind of where I was at with, that information kind of needs known when we're doing the budgeting before we pass the budget. So that we can plan for the next year, which is why I presented that information a year ago. So I don't, I don't know what we're going to do for this year, but that will need to be a discussion, I guess.
Thank you for the update.
Okay.
All right. We're going to step back out of board pending and move to the Finance Systems Steering Committee update report from all those who will never be here.
I'm actually going to move down around.
So you guys got it done right before you're leaving?
What's that?
You all got it done before you're leaving, right?
You guys are going to argue?
Mr. Sauter, if you could speak into the mic, please.
Yeah. You'll hear me.
So this is your finance, Clickatack County Finance Steering Committee. And after discussion, we decided that this probably need to be memorialized in form of a resolution because it was formed during a workshop. And three of the four of us will be leaving. And there's one remaining member that was a little nervous about not having anything in writing on where we were going. So, and he had a good point. So we have before you what we've come up with and we're here to discuss it if you want to discuss it. And anybody else have something you want to add out of the committee?
I will.
Let me know if you find the page.
Yeah. It's on 35 of 175.
Yeah. It's 35. I tried to print it, but our printer got jammed and I left.
Usually I have cheat tabs, but this week.
So yeah, as, as the auditor said, the Finance Steering Committee has been meeting since 2019, was, was formed, you know, obviously a previous board, previous lots of folks to look at updating or making some recommendations and ultimately decision as far as the, the financial system of the county. That began in 2019 and so we've been meeting, we've met multiple times, you know, on a, on a pretty regular basis, in fact. And did, and it's, it's all kind of laid out in the resolution, which I want to thank the treasurer and the auditor, the Public Works Director and the clerk for helping to kind of get it consolidated down into a single document. But we really felt like, as, as Brenda said, three of the four of us are, are leaving in a couple, three weeks. And we thought it was important to, we should have some sort of final report, a final recommendation. Because we are well along in this process and we really felt like it would be important to kind of share where we're at and make our recommendations for, for going forward. So that's what, that's what you have before us.
Consultant is way under, sorry.
As the only person that's going to be here next year.
The last, the last member.
I, I agree with Dave. We have spent many sessions discussing, starting back in 2019 in a workshop and some documents that were presented by then budget person Glenn Chipman. And some structures and, and this group started out of that. And we've been through a lot of different areas and discussions and trying to figure out how to make it to where it will be successful going forward so that we can get a system. And obviously in the interim of there, we had the COVID situation, which kind of waylaid us a little bit. But I think that the, you know, this group has put together the RFP to bring on Barry Dunn, who's doing the work on the, on trying to bring ERP vendors to the table. And I think we're quite, we're, we're, we're quite a ways along on that. We're finishing up some of the discovery process and hopefully we'll be starting those in January. So I, I really do, I agree with Dave. I'd like to thank the group. I mean, there's been a lot of time and, and working through a lot of challenges. I mean, you have the challenges from my office and Brenda's office and then from, you know, the, all the folks. And so we've been able to get, I think, quite a ways down trying to get this system replaced, which I think we all recognize, or maybe not replace, but updated or wherever. So I think we, you know, that's what we're on the path for. And I think we have a pretty good foundation to be able to do that.
There was a lot of effort that went into getting to this point and time. And I think time is one thing that we don't have a lot of with our current system. And so to keep this process moving forward, you know, this resolution will help the next group of people kind of know what we thought and came up with. That was important to help the process move forward and not backtrack or start over or all those other things that really waste time and, and don't get us to where we need to be. So I, everybody, you know, put forth a lot of effort to get to this point. And I think our goal is to see it continue to move forward after we're gone.
So if I could just, as far as what the kind of current path that we're on right now, just, and it's not necessarily for you folks. It's also for folks that are, because I'm sure, I can, I can hear some head scratching over Zoom right now where people are, what are they even talking about? And just saw a little background information, you know, the financial, the, basically the accounting system, the, the way we keep the books for the county. We have been operating on Kianta for a long time. And we don't want to presuppose Kianta is still a, is still a vendor. And that will be a decision, you know, in the future that'll get made. So we've been going through this process to, Barry Dunn right now is establishing what we need to be asking for in, from vendors for this new system. And a lot of work, I have staff folks that work with these systems every day have been ongoing for the last two or three months. And so the, the plan is now that the, in the first quarter of next year, then we will put the solicitation out, we will have, the vendors will come in, when I say we, you and Greg and whoever else is now, although one of you will be sitting here as far as on the Finance Steering Committee, will come and make their presentations. And then ultimately, a decision will be made about which vendor to go. And then it will be a lengthy process of, you know, putting the new system in, the transfer over, all the training and all that stuff. There's a ton of work to be done. You know, we're a long ways down the road, but there's, it's, it's a pretty long road. But it is definitely necessary to get, get the new system. I think one of the most important things that we really felt like was that, and it's in the last piece of the resolution of the committee's, okay. I'm just going to read that. That it says, whereas during the evaluation of needs, the Financial Steering Committee has determined that it is the best, in the best interest of the county, and this is our recommendation, that it continue to facilitate the management of the installation and ongoing maintenance of the ERP system. So that the Steering Committee continues. It's going to have new people, but that the committee itself, that that is the best way forward. In addition, the Steering Committee has recommended that there be two system administrators, one in the auditor's office and one from a department using cost accounting and inventory, which is accounting speak for Public Works, or it could be senior services is another that they use a similar. And that's why we changed the language to be more inclusive, not so exclusive. But that there be two system administrators. The two system administrators would co-chair, would co-chair a technical advisory committee, made up of representatives from the auditors, the treasurers, fiscal management, budget, public works and information technology. So we, we felt like that was an important recommendation to make as far as kind of management and implementation of the new system, whatever that new system is going to be in the future. That will be, three of the four of us will have no say in what that is. So although I will be watching, so, although I, I really won't care.
I don't know. I'll watch and I might.
She will. The auditor will still care.
Very well said, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, discussions?
No. Good work. I'm curious what Barry Dunn says in the spring, so.
Well, we're hopeful, the, the biggest concern we have, and they've seen it in other places, and that's why, and I, I don't think I'm telling tales, but is the, you know, it's, it is a lot of work to respond to an RFP. And, you know, you may put this out on the street and you, you may end up with, you only get one or two people or a single vendor in that, or, or for, you know, and we want to have, you know, we're trying to get that nice sweet spot number because all of those, and so, you know, we want to get legitimate folks to respond that are actually serious. But we want a serious response, not they're just giving us something to have their name in there. Because it, it's a lot of work to respond. And so that's one of the things that we've been developing. It's kind of more of a hybrid. It's a, it's not a full response. It's, it's like a little more abbreviated to kind of weed out. I would, I don't know if weed out is the right, but it's really the serious.
Really find the people that are serious and then want to pursue the project to the end. Because there's a lot of folks out there that are doing this and so that are maybe bigger, higher paying counties in the Clickatack County. So Barry Dunn has given us some advice that really if we go this other way, they have a feeling, that's one thing. They have a feeling for how this industry and how this RFP process works. And they have contacts out there and they have other instances where people have gone through the process, put in all the work and got, like Dave said, two or none, and none of which are quality of what they were hoping for. And so we're kind of trying to do that on their advice with a little bit of reverse, where we're going to go out and find out who's interested without them having to really go through the response, but still having the 4,000 items that we need to have in there and kind of do it in a backwards way and try to get to the same process with vendors that are going to want to be here and actually install the system in here and support Clickatack County.
Maybe it'll be Kianta.
Well, we don't know when it's going to be. Yeah.
Well, it may or may not be, but I guess I probably shouldn't call it Abacus 2.0, but it's not Kianta's fault. It's 25-year-old programming that we haven't upgraded.
Okay. So you guys want to keep the Steering Committee, the electeds plus the director and have that as the overall overarching. But you want to have a technical advisory group that has.
Two managers.
Two, two managers.
Co-chairs.
Two co-chairs plus all the other departments that are going to need to be when we start working with Barry Dunn and everything. My question is, should one of the system administrators be from information and technology to have access to the new software?
I think the system administrators are really folks that are managing the tables and doing a lot of the work. For example, right now Pam is our main system administrator and what she's setting up tables. I mean, we have, that's the purpose of that sub-technical committee and including IT on that and some of the other folks, is to then provide some sources to this group. Because the auditor is the one who signs the financial statements for the county. And in a lot of counties is the person who actually holds the financial system. In our county, it's not like that. And so that's one of the reasons why we feel that this is a good approach in order to kind of keep everything rolling. So we can have a recommendation come from this committee to the board that would be vetted through the auditor, the treasurer, a member of the commission and the public or other heavy users of the system. So I, I don't, I mean, we've talked, had discussions with Randy and other folks on there. But I think that that whole system administrator piece is a person setting up users and doing other things, not doing like database hierarchy and all that kind of stuff. Because there's a good chance that the system is going to be web-based potentially. That's another, we, we don't know that. We're just, you know, I mean, you have to think that that's going to be a player in this whole thing. So that's, or cloud-based, sorry. But that's one of the reasons why that technical committee is there is really because there's times where we four were like, well, we don't really sure. So we needed some of the more in the weeds folks of being that kind of technical group.
How long do you folks figure that this board in its new form next year is going to need to be around?
I think the idea was.
The Finance Steering Committee?
The Finance Steering Committee would be permanent. It would be permanent.
Perpetuity.
For this system, that that would be the, the, the way things would move up through. Meaning that the, you know, the technical advisory committee are the, they're going to be tackling the day-to-day issues that come up.
Right.
And the system administrators are, you know, similar to, I mean, it's actually working okay now. It's just more, this is really kind of just puts in place what's already working, except adding a second system administrator, which we don't have by design a single point. We just happen to have a single system administrator, which is dangerous.
Right. And the reason I was looking for that clarification is because my, my main question is the commissioner appointment to it, should it be the same commissioner over the life of the deal? Or should it be the chairman sitting on it for that year and the next chairman sitting in on it for that year? And what's your opinion of that versus one commissioner for the next four years? Kind of thing. Have you thought about that?
I, I don't, I, I think we've kind of, I mean, obviously when this started, Dave was the chairman of the board. And then through all the processes with different things, I think it made sense as we'd had a lot of tough discussions and there really wasn't much in there. We didn't want to have to go back and kind of revisit that. I, I don't know personally that it needs to be the chairman of the board. I think it just needs to be a representation of the board. And so if the board had.
And so if the board had a person come through, it would be maybe nice that it's somebody who's not a one-year person and maybe it's a two-year stint or something. And it would be nice to maybe have a change because it would bring a different perspective. The finance committee, which isn't the chairman of the board and specified in statute, we don't really have a choice in that and we've asked the PA for that. This is not what we're recommending on this. We're just saying, we recognize that there needs to be the, a board member on there. And I think that if it was somebody who was on there for, if the board chose for a person for two years or however the board broke it down. But I think having some, because it does get technical. I mean, there is a part where you're working through some technical things and Dave might have some more to add to that as a board person himself.
Well, that's what I was thinking though, because one year you're going to be darn near retraining people.
Yeah. You, you could be as far as the terminology and the, I, I would especially agree during this process as far as like, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what we're going to do, you know, pick out a new system, all that kind of stuff. Once the, the, this committee will be in perpetuity and it's really that, once the system's up and running, it should be not so heavy. But I, I mean, honestly, it should always be up to the board who they think the best. Because as, as Greg said, it's not, it's not like the,
It's not outlined in statute.
Steering committee where it's in the statute, it has to be the board chair. And maybe that's the right choice, but I, you know, that would be deferred to the board at the time.
I think continuity is far more important than just picking the board chair.
I agree. I, the continuity, and that's why Dave, we, we asked that he stay on, was for that continuity. So.
And then he chose to not run.
Again, I will, I will remind you, we started this in 2019.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I had just run at that point.
Three of the four of them are arguing for continuity.
Three of the four are arguing for continuity. In the future, there has been continuity. It's just happens though, but yeah, so.
No, I, I mean, my natural inclination is to be, why do we need, you know, a committee and then a subcommittee and all that? You're just adding more layers. But I think where we're going with this system, that technical advisory group is going to be the heavy lifters. You all have other things that you're working on, or I guess you all are leaving. But that group is going to have, you know, the other things and you're setting the policy in the direction and you're wide as into the weeds unless you're serving on that technical advisory group too in your capacity.
Right. The one thing that I would say is that this, it is going to, it is going to be good with, I think, a financial system to really be able to vet things with the audit, with the account. In, in county government, we have a unique accounting department, which serves, which goes across many areas. There's a part of it in my office, there's a part in Brenda's office, there's a part in Gordy's office, and then there's 35 other parts that are out there too across the county underneath of Dave's or the board's purview. So I do think having this committee is a good idea because I think we can vet some of that and have those discussions and make sure when we're headed those, that we can keep the, give the direction to those admins and say, okay, we're going to do this or we're going to bring on time and attendance, or however, because there is going to be, even though we're getting a brand-new system, it's going to need something at some point in time. And we're going to need a group that can collectively sit around and say, okay, hey, what direction do we want to go? We're at a crossroad here.
Without having to, I mean, your goal is to advise us to make a decision, but our job is to trust in the amount of brain power sitting at that desk to not second-guess your decisions.
A hundred percent. And give Brenda a good tool to act, or the auditor, a good tool to sign accurate financial statements.
Right. So I, I think this, this group moving forward is a good idea. And I think it makes sense with the, you know, continuity of at least two years or more or whatever. So.
Well, we can't promise any more than that.
Right. We can't promise anymore.
I can promise two weeks of continuity.
Greg's going to have a lot of heavy lifting next year. He's got to re-educate three new people sitting down there.
That's what I told him. He's going to be the senior, he's going to be the senior statesman of the group now. Gary, Gary, so it's like time to step up, Mr. Treasurer.
All right. Well, you've sold me. I'm, you want to come back up?
I will come back up here and vote on this.
All right. Is there any other discussions, questions?
I just want to thank Dave as a chair, I mean, as a commissioner, I mean, he was very helpful in helping us all go. I mean, again, we've had a lot of discussions and I, I appreciate, I think we're, we're also here because of Dave and just his time on the board in his last couple of weeks. Yeah. Well, I, I will say from my perspective, and I know it's shared by all of you, is that we should have been having this presentation a year ago, two years ago. And it's like we're, I'm happy, I, we've, we've come a long ways. I just think when we started, we thought we would have been a lot further, you know, like, we did. COVID helped a lot, but a lot of it is, this is a, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, county government's a big giant thing to try to move. When you have all these pieces that everybody wants, you know, this is the most important thing that we need to be considering. And it's like, from your perspective, but that's, I,
It touches on everything.
But it touches on everything. And so it is, that's why I think that what we proposed as far as is a good idea. Like, I really hope that technical committee, because they're the, they're the folks that are using it. And they, and you know, we, we were kind of, we kind of discussed the whole co-chairing thing and how that was, you know, and that's, that will be for them to dissolve, decide how they would run that meeting as far as are they going to alternate between them and what in whatnot. But that's, you know, at this point, that same, that basically that group of people is work, is already doing this. They're working really well together. But we just thought it's, it's like we were talking earlier with Jen about, we have all these processes that we do, but we've never memorialized, we've never written them down. And when you get a big turnover of new people, they're unaware of all that and they, like, why are you doing it that way? It's because they don't have that history. And so we thought it was a good idea to get it down. So that's, that's, this is the best shot at it. Understanding that any resolution the board passes, a future board can unpass. And it's just a recommendation at this point.
And be undone or redone or whatever.
Yeah, modify.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman. We have before us a resolution on the matter of the finance steering committee and ERP implementation recommendation. My motion is to approve the resolution as submitted.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the ERP system for the committee of the system.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And do we know yet, I asked this question last week, what ERP stands for?
Enterprise Resource.
Program.
Resource Program.
Okay.
Yeah. Anymore, it's just everything, including the kitchen sink.
Right. So it's not just the finance system, system. It could be time and attendance, it could be anything, inventory, anything that's.
Since three out of the four of you are going to be leaving, I would like to say thank you for all the time that you've put on since 2019. And I'm sorry, you, you didn't get to see it be completed by the time you're leaving. But we don't know how long it's going to take.
Completed by the time we're leaving. And thank you for Gordy for letting the others get a word in edgewise.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate all of everybody else's then. I mean, I might have been, you know, as auditor, the chairman of it, but there's been a lot of work going from the other three members here too. And, yeah.
Yeah. Brenda had the, the, the unenviable thing of trying to herd the cats together for, that was part of, some of the problems were, you know, we're four really busy people and to try to get everybody's schedules aligned all the time. And then as the calendar wound out, we found that we actually got better because when you hold a gun to our head, it's like, you know, I could probably move that. Yeah, I'll be there.
We're going to need another bronze plaque that lives on one side of any other.
Well, sometimes I think you had a dog chasing these cats too. Trying to herd them. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, next up, we have right on time, our water conservancy board update.
Gentlemen, I'm going to need to step out to go, but I did want to give you a brief, like five-second board pending. In the executive, we had Mr. Juveo meeting some documents. Documentation over yesterday.
Okay.
So with a, let me know if there's anything else you need. So other than that, not parts handled.
That's all you got for a minute?
Nothing we can't wait.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, thank you. And to you guys, I'm sorry, I have to step away. I have a, can you go to?
But you're, you're a yes, right? Whatever they're asking for?
You guys can handle that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Craig Stevens, our water conservancy board chair will give our annual report.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Well, not much has changed over the year except the list of pending decisions has shortened somewhat. Hopefully it will be shorter after the next couple of days. We've been doing our work with ecology, trying to bridge the gap between reality and ecology. Sometimes it's hard to do. Dave's our brains the outfit. He keeps us operating within the law and keeps the books. I don't know what we're going to do when he decides he's done because we're going to be hurting.
It's always two more years.
Although I hear there's a new potential conservancy board member.
Oh.
He, he used to be a county commissioner. Not, not you.
Oh. First I ever, I was going through my list of like, Ray, baby. I know, yay.
Just know there's always room for you.
Oh, okay. That's an offer. Okay. Yes.
So moved.
Yeah.
We've got, we got a bunch of applications there in January of 2020. COVID hit, everybody trying to get in on an old application before the Florida changed. And I don't know, what did we have? Ten, ten, twelve, something like that. I think we're down to Seven. Seven, something like that. We got three we're going to work on tomorrow with ecology. We're, we're at it, but it's slow.
Yeah.
It's just a terribly slow process to try and get ecology to do something.
They're still not back in the office, right?
No, they're. Ecology, I think, yeah. You may, we may need to get special meetings. We've got a technical assistance meeting with tomorrow. Craig suggested we're going to be working on three water right changes.
And how, if I may, Mr. Chair, because I am kind of curious how, I know how it's supposed to work, but I'm curious how it works, meaning, you know, the, the, some of the frustration that I have been told over the, you know, that in, in, you know, the whole point of the water conservancy board is, is to basically do the legwork, make the, here's all, you know, do the fact-finding, get the information together, present it and with the recommendation as what. And, you know, I've heard in the past that it's ecology, it's, it's almost like they're duplicating your efforts or it's like they don't trust the work that the conservancy board does. And it's, I mean, is that accurate? Is that happening?
The benefit of the conservancy board is you get to jump a place in line.
Right.
It gets in front of the ecology faster.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, principally if, if you. Because anything we send to ecology, they go over and fine-toothed.
Okay.
And they always modify our decisions. Have we ever had one that wasn't modified? Not that I can recall.
Okay.
I'm not sure any other boards have experienced that.
I would say that's disappointing, but not surprising. I mean, it's.
I mean, they've been done by engineers, aspect and all these engineering outfits have, have done some of these RODs that we set up. And they still modify them. So.
Okay.
You can always count on that. And Dave also maintains all our records. Public education, once in a while we get people asking about water rights, but the people need to understand that they need to maintain their water rights. It's not something that seems to be very well-known, even, even now. And Dave's also, you know, with all his hats, he's also our financial guy. And he's keeping up with the audits every year to the auditor's office. So they're happy. Then we have this list of tasks that we maintain, the board's files that Dave, Dave takes care of. Where's Eric Benny gets? I took a class this year for Open Public Meetings Act and try to make sure that we don't miss something.
So are you, so that you have to comply with open public meetings? It's considered a public meeting also?
And public records as well.
Oh, wow. Okay.
All, all nine yards. And the board plans the following activities. They continue to perform site visits and travel as necessary. Over sit and involvement with the board's record of decisions. Travel statewide, not recently, but maybe if, ecology starts giving classes again. And yeah, we're proactive approach to the pending water transfers in Clicktack County. They've got a marshal, now a water marshal, if you'd call it. Water, uh, water master.
Water master?
Kind of is out scouting around now. He's caught a couple of people that are watering outside there.
Their permit?
Yeah. So.
Is that for all of Clicktack County or where, what's his purview?
I, you know, I don't know. He's up in the orchards is where he caught one or two. Well, I think, I think in generally, we've seen him across the county. And, and, and the things that he's coming up with aren't, aren't big. It's like over, you have a water right that's 50 or 60 years old. And sometimes the properties aren't aligned where they're using the water.
Right.
It may be outside that boundary somewhat or there may have been an administrative error. So you see that.
Who is that person?
I have not met him. I'm not sure I know him. Is it Ryan Murphy? Is that his name? That may be. I don't. Yeah, I think that's his name. I've really had no contact with him. Usually they, they speak directly with the water right holders and, and we'll see the work, results of his efforts will be coming in as a change.
Right.
Application to get the corrections done. And this year we had to use the 10,800 grant that the county commissioners graciously provide for us every year. We asked that you budget it for next year. Hopefully we won't meet it unless something big happens.
We've been late. Yeah, we've been late. Very privileged.
We, we really appreciate the support of the commissioners in the county. This wouldn't, I mean, you just look at other counties where they're sparse in commissioners and compliance. And they just, it asks a lot of the people involved. And then they have reaching in your pocket every week to pay for stuff is a tough, tough road. You guys have any questions? Let's make a comment. I think we're going to, in terms of the challenges working through the water right changes. Craig noted that we received a lot of applications there at the beginning of 2020. People trying to get ahold of the new application form. Well, that form has gone into effect and we've not had a water right change application since then. And it just recently became effective. But it's asking for a lot of upfront work on the part of water right holders, going out and getting a licensed hydrogeologist to do.
and getting a licensed hydrogeologist to do, you know, the extend validity work upfront and the hydrological work upfront. There's thousands and thousands of dollars that goes into just getting the application together now. So that was, I think that's the big disappointment without working with the water conservancy boards sort of get a better feel, is this going to hunt, you know, are you going to succeed in getting this water right change? Get a sense of that before you start investing the money. I think this, this idea of getting it front loaded is, is not good for the water right holders. I mean, they may incur those costs over the course of it, but at least they'll be weighing in.
Once they have a better idea.
Yeah, once they see what, see what's in front of them and have a better way.
This is more speculative than if you, you gotta spend all this money to find out that maybe it's, it's not going to work.
Right.
And if you kind of got some indication of that at the beginning.
Well, there's always that chance at the end of the day as well.
But they, they still have the pre, pre-conference meetings to find out, like, do you actually have a case?
Right, you get a pre-conference meeting.
Before you really start spending the money. It's just that you gotta have all your ducks in a row when you submit your application, right?
Yeah, part of that financial aid that you guys give us keeps the application fee low at $500. A lot of counties, it's actual cost, you know, they have some, I've seen some $1,500 and $2,000 application and up from there. We're here, we've got the money, we just need some people to do their water rights.
But you, I mean, how, how many do you currently have in the queue?
We've got seven we're processing now.
Seven currently processing. So you successfully processed four this year or, I mean?
A couple this year.
A couple this year, yeah.
Down on the west end of the county?
No.
I've got nothing, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Doing good work, thanks for your.
And I believe we put the $10,000 in the?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we're not going to have Dave to kick around anymore?
No.
I thought you were trying to hire him. For your glorious.
Yeah, your glorious position there.
With 40 hours of homework to start it.
Yeah.
Are you going to build a column in there so you can deal with the other side? Commissioner decides, you've got to have a place to hide.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you need a big column so I can hide it, maybe.
Yeah, that was always a good place to hide.
Yeah, behind, I know there is nitty in here, it's the new building, we.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for driving up, Greg. Okay. Board pending. Do you have anything else?
I don't think so. I mean, this will be a discussion for the board the first of the year, but I have had several inquiries from, because as you know, we, we serve on all kinds of boards and commissions outside of this Tuesday meeting. As far as who will be filling those positions. And I had kind of indicated my thought, what, what I had heard, you know, in the discussions between yourself and Commissioner Christopher was that the plan was the incoming commissioner would likely take on most of the same committee work that I would. So I was hoping, I was actually hoping she was going to be here today so I could, one thing, so that she knows that, because I think sometimes they're completely, they don't have a full, okay, good, as far as what. And I don't know if the clerk is, you know, switching the calendar things over. And I don't know how we have treated it in the past as far as the, like, there's a lot of I'm on email lists that really that needs to be redirected to the new, and I don't know if IT can just do that, that stuff that comes in can just go to the new commissioner. Because things fall between the cracks when that's, because you know how that is, you're, I know, you know, we have stuff that's still coming in for Commissioner Johnston and, that we respond to. It's the, and so I think that's, I think that's important to do that, because it's, it's going to be difficult enough to get up to speed, much less if you're missing a bunch of notifications and people don't know they're supposed to be there, so.
Like, there's things like McKed, I think she could do great on, and then there's stuff like the financial software stuff and it's like, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I don't know that I would, yeah, I think a little.
We could pick up some of that slack.
Yeah.
And then LSC, he's picking up, so that's going to be a little easier for.
Right.
Yeah, one I don't know might be SWATCH, because I'm currently on that and I didn't know.
Or ATSWAT too is another, which that, you know, is, that's a fine, I mean, we all have to take our, our assignments and, you know, that's, that's another, that's a really important committee with the area aging and it's a good, I was not, I've only been on there the last two years, because that was Rex, they handled that before. They took that off, but that's, there's, there's more going on with that than you realize, at least that I realized until I was actually on the committee. And so I think that's another important one. And then I don't know with the, I'm thinking of like classic, the Clickcat Lyle substance abuse would be another one. And Lori's from Clickcat, so that would be a natural fit, that she would be the one that would take that one over.
So is there any, anything you sit on that wouldn't be good for a brand new commissioner?
I would say other than the finance steering committee on the financial system, no, everything else, it's, you just throw them in the deep end of the pool and they'll figure it out. You know how that is, they'll swim. You might, you know, might sputter a little bit from time, I still, I don't swim as well as I used to either, so.
You float better.
I float better though, that's right.
Any other thing else?
Nope, nope.
Okay, I'll give a short update. You know, we went back to DC for the Hood River Bridge last week, met with senators and representatives from both sides of the river. And those meetings went really well. We've, we've got a lot of institutional knowledge and support from our senate delegation from Washington as well as from Oregon. They are willing to make any phone call, write any letter we need. And then the transportation, we met, that's a one day was with them and then the next day was with transportation, federal highways, and we got a lot of really good information out of them. We actually ended up meeting with Charles Smalls, who is the deputy undersecretary, so the guy right below Pete, was a, and we didn't expect him to show up. And, and so, you know, that's a political appointed position where he just, he's a straight shooter and says, this is what we need, this is what you need to work on, this is how we want you to go. And it was really good information. And then we just heard today that Oregon Transportation Commission is, the, all the work we've put in with them is really paying off. They're saying that I-5 and the Hood River Bridge are the top priorities for Oregon. And so our big thing right now is, you know, we got 75 million from Washington, we've got, you know, hoping to get about 125 from Washington, 125 from Oregon. We'll raise somewhere around 100 with TFIAT toll, toll bonds and then anything we can get out of the feds, which it better be at least 125. The feds definitely know who we are and, and so it's, it's really positive. I mean, there's.
Who always, who went with you?
It was Mayor Kiefler, Mike Fox, who's with the Porta Hood River, and then me, and then Michael Shannon with HNTB. So he is taken over as the project manager. So it was, it was the right number of people to fit in all the, the offices with the people and not everybody's getting just like little snippets.
Yeah, no, that's good.
And you're not just sitting there not talking, so it was the right amount. We'll probably be making multiple more trips, you know, as we go through it. But we still got multiple grants still outstanding and we just need to get the, the record of decision, that's the big thing right now.
Okay, good.
That's my big, big update. You're in here, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. All right, that's, that's all I have for right now. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Don't believe so.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting until Thursday, December 15th at 9:00 AM for scheduled workshops.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of adjourning until December, or Thursday, December 15th at 9:00 AM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all for signing on and being here today. Have a wonderful weekend, week, weekend and holidays.